Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Ryanbeck zoning board of appeals meeting for November 17th, 2021. Before we get going, I need to read a little something into the record so that the virtual meeting is legitimate. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to New York State legislation under New York State Senate Bill 50001 and New York State Assembly Bill A40001, which has extended virtual access to public meetings held pursuant to New York State's open meetings law. This legislation allows this ABA to be held remotely and allows the public to virtually participate. All right, and with that said, the first order of business is to approve the minutes. We'll take September 1st. And the meeting minutes were for September 15, 2021. Did everybody have an opportunity to take a look at them? And if so, does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns?
I think they're fine.
Yeah, I thought they were fine, too. So let me, before I get going here, and because we're gonna have to start voting on some certain things, let me make sure I have a quorum. We have Tim Allenbrook. We have Catherine Clark and myself, so that makes a quorum. Do I have Tim Ekinopoly here? I can only see so many folks.
Scott, Tim Ekinopoly, this is Kim. Tim Ekinopoly just sent an email asking for the Zoom link, so I'll send that to him.
Okay. Richard, are you here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay. All right. So anyway, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes for September 15th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Catherine Clark. All in favor, I'll call your name. I'm in favor, Catherine?
Yes.
Tim Allenbrook?
Here.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, approved. All right, next, we have the meeting minutes for October 20th, 2021. Did everybody have an opportunity to review those minutes? And if so, any questions, concerns, corrections?
No, none here.
Yeah, they looked okay to me. So yeah, good job, Gretchen. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes for October 20th, 2021. Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay. And all in favor, Catherine?
Yes.
Tim Allenbrook?
Yes.
Richard?
Hi.
Me, yes. All right, so all the meeting minutes are taken care of. And is, I think I saw Mark, Mark Dixon, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Mark, you are up next to give a presentation on the, it's the natural resource inventory project?
Yes. And Jim, do you have that slideshow, or am I running it from, how are we doing this?
I have it, just give me one.
What's, does that mean, yes, you're running it, or am I running it?
I have it, I'll run it.
Great. So so Scott, thanks for letting me take the time to talk to the ZBA. We've taken on this project, we're in a partnership, the town of Ryanbeck is now in a partnership with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Dutchess County and Hudson River Estuary Program. That's DEC to create a natural resource inventory. It's a technical assistance partnership, and it's, we're getting this all for free. So it's great that we're getting it free, but it will have some limitations, but we wanted to kind of reach out to the boards, because this is gonna affect the ZBA, the planning board, and the whole town, and we wanted to make you aware of what we're doing. Okay, Jim, next. Our project team is the Town of Ryanbeck, and the Conservation Advisory Board is leading that effort for the Town of Ryanbeck, and we're also involved with the Village of Ryanbeck and the Town of Hyde Park. So we're all coordinating this together, and with the Hudson River Estuary Program and Cornell Cooperative Extension of Dutchess County. It's gonna be one NRI, which will be for the village and the town. And then also, there'll be, Hyde Park will get their NRI as well. Okay, Jim? So tonight's presentation, I'm gonna talk about what a natural resource inventory is, what our project goals are, a timeline, the maps, which is pretty much the major deliverable of this, and the NRI uses. Okay, Jim, I'll try to keep this moving along, because I know you guys are busy. So the inventory, this is the steps. First, then doing a natural resource inventory is the first step toward understanding what we have. Once we know what we have, then we can, we start to prioritize what, which resources we might want to, might deserve higher levels of protection. And then you go on to the next phase, which would be to come up with ways to plan, manage, and protect those resources. Jim? So what is a natural resource inventory? It's basically categorizing, inventorying the resources that we have in the town. Most of this data that we're getting, and it's through this technical assistance partnership, so it's all for free. What we're getting is, I don't know if you've ever been on the, DEC has a mapper, a natural resource mapper, it's called the Hudson Valley Resource Mapper. And they provide a lot of information of the natural resources, and they've inventoried all through the Hudson Valley, all these resources, the geological soils, water resources, habitats. Although we have additional resources on habitats, Ryanbeck did a study that was performed by Hudsonian, so that gives us a lot more additional data for habitats, land use, climate conditions. So a lot of the, other than the Hudsonian data, a lot of our data is gonna come from the DEC and what they already have in their resource mapper, but it'll be clipped down so we just see Ryanbeck. Okay, Jim? Go ahead. So the main deliverable is the maps, and Cornell Cooperative Extension is doing the mapping for us. So what we get out of the partnership is just gonna be a paper deliverable, or PDF deliverable. Usually what's done is towns would go out and get a, we could get grants actually through the DEC, and the town would, would, would also contribute to that effort, and then hire an outside consultant, and then we could do whatever we want. And a lot of times, these maps would go online and be called, create a web mapper, just like Dutchess Parcel Access is a web mapper, and the DEC has their web mapper. But we're just gonna get a hard copy deliverable through this, although we will get the GIS files. So the hard copy NRI will be, the maps will be with and without parcels, with written descriptions for each map. Okay, Jim? These are our NRI goals. Cultivate stewardship of the resources. And I found it's a CAB member writing the reports that I have an opportunity to write. I utilize these databases, these GIS databases, and I try to provide that information in these reports, so the US planners, the ZBA or the planning board, have the information. You know what's there. So, and also, I like to style my reports to, to the applicant. So the applicant knows what's there, because there are this, they are ultimately the stewards of the land, the people who own these, these, these properties. So if we resource, if we have this inventory that's accessible to people in the town and property owners, then they will know what's on their property and cultivate that stewardship. Also to inform planning, designing, and review. So that's really your, your field. So when you make a decision, I know it's one of your decision-making trees, is, is it gonna affect the environment? And unless, if CBA can't give you a report, this would be an opportunity to give you the information, so you could look at that area where something is happening to see what's there and what, what impacts there might be on the environment. And then it would also ultimately be the foundation for plans and policies. And I know there's gonna be an effort to update our comprehensive plan, and this would all, this obviously would be a good tool to, to help that effort. Okay, Jim? So this is our project timeline. We began the partnership in March. Through the summer, we've been developing the maps. Fall, winter is our public outreach, and that's why I'm here tonight, to let you know what we're doing, to get the public involved. The maps are now online, by the way, if you go onto the Conservation Advisory Board webpage, there's NRI project link, and that'll take you to where you can see our draft maps. And then we'll be finalizing, hopefully, the project by summer of 2022. It's next summer, this coming summer. Okay, Jim? So we're gonna get, I think we're talking about 25 maps, and they will include climate, physical settings, water resources, habitats, wildlife, land use. Go ahead, Jim? So climate, this is an example, one of the maps that, that they've put together, climate resilience, this particular example, the dark green shows areas that would be more resilient in a, in a changing climate. Then when we say more resilient for wildlife and habitat resilience. So we see those areas, that those have a higher probability of, of protecting our wildlife and species, those might be areas that we want, might wanna protect as well. Okay, next. Physical settings, topography, elevation, steep slopes, this map shows steep slopes. This, the steeps, this is just the green, so it's between 5 and 10%, I think. It's not really a lot of steep slopes in Ryanbeck. Bedrock geology and superficial geology. Okay, Jim? Water resources, this is gonna show the streams, wetlands, we all know, and that'll be part of it, wetlands, floodplains, because that's all readily available, and that won't be included. This, this particular map, I think, is interesting. It shows, the dark green shows high permeability areas overlying aquifers. So that would mean that things can get through the, will permeate through the soils down to the aquifer more quickly in those areas. So that might be areas that might, you might consider for higher levels of protection, that you don't want things to be built in area that could impact your aquifers. Streams, watersheds, DEC classifications, floodplains, stream habitats, wetlands. Okay, Jim? Habitats and wildlife, we are in a good position, said Hudsonian did a report, and you can link to that report off the comprehensive plan. And there's a lot of maps, but the maps don't do a lot of good. I, fortunately, I got my hands on the GIS files for the maps, so now I can overlay them over the parcel data, and I can see what's there, what Hudsonian says is there. It's a lot more detailed. I'm a little disappointed in our NRI effort here, I'm finding that, you know, through our partnership, we're getting a little more emphasis on the DEC data, we're not gonna get a lot more, as much emphasis on our Hudsonian data, but that is a lot more specific to be used. But the DEC does have a lot of area data on biodiversity and forests, and I thought it's also interesting, the fish habitats and migratory fish habitats. So this is all things that we would include. Okay, Jim? Land use agricultural resources, conservation, recreation, and scenery, and municipal protection. Okay? So we go from prioritize to plan, protect, and manage, and they show an examples of comprehensive plan and zoning updates. So obviously, that, that impacts the ZBA and the, the planning board. Our comprehensive plan is starting to get a little old, and then I think we recently did a study on it, and it doesn't really reflect a lot of the kind of changing priorities with climate change and resource protection. So that's, those are just examples of things that we could do to kind of codify some of the things we find in the NRI. Okay? And there's more examples, planning, open space plan, open space inventory, community preservation plans. Go ahead. And this is, okay, go ahead, that's good. And then developing checklists. We actually have this checklist in our code for subdivision, minor subdivision review. I did, I threw that to Michael Trimble, and he wasn't really familiar with it, unfortunately. The DEC actually has us as a great example of using this checklist on one of their NRI guidebooks, web guidebooks that they put up, and they were a little surprised that we're not using it. But hopefully, we will be using these checklists that we, that we have. Okay, go on. And stewardship again, well, there, this is an example of Beekman using the natural resource inventory to help, help them develop better stewardship of a public lands, of their park. I think it's also municipal, municipals can, municipality or Brianbeck can, can be a better steward as long as, as well as property owners. Okay, go ahead. And it's just a more example of the Beekman's project, how they used it. And then you can get more information, and there's the link to the NRI page, project page, and there's my contact information. The one thing while I got Jim, and I don't know if it talked about cultural resources, we're, we're Melody was a little surprised, is it cultural resources? How does that get play in? We can, actually, we can add a lot of things to this natural resource inventory, and unfortunately, I haven't been able to get the data. And I don't know if it's available, Jim, you might even know, a lot of those diagrams that are in the comprehensive plan, I can only get the PDFs, like even the scenic roads, I can't even get in the, in the mapping files, I don't know if they exist or not. And there was also maps of historical, historical sites, properties that we could include in this NRI, if, if the mapping files are somewhere to be found. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me, and thank you for giving me your time.
Mark, thank you very much for the presentation, is very informative. And I look forward to, you know, getting that information once it's, it's all finished. I think it will be very useful for us in, in our deliberations. So thank you very much. And before we continue onward, just a quick question, can you hear a crazy chocolate lab in the background? Because if you can, I'll no, okay. I have a couple of chocolate labs who by definition are crazy, and they're barking like crazy, so I don't know what's going on outside. So if it gets disruptive, let me know, and I'll get my wife involved. So, but again, Mark, thank you very much. And so the next thing that's on is the Daniels matter, and is somebody here for that new application?
Yes, Robert Murray.
Okay, Robert, are you there? Can I see you?
Let's see, I don't think I can, oh yeah, I think I can, there you go.
There you are, all right. All right. You've been through this process before. Basically, what we're doing now is, is just looking at the application and seeing if we have enough information to accept the application and, and schedule a public hearing. I, in reviewing this in preparation for the the meeting here, and this is kind of a spoiler alert, I think we're gonna have some deficiencies here, and I'm not, and they're, they're not your fault necessarily, I don't think they are, but I just think we may have some information that's not included here, I think you may need another variance. And depending on what goes on here, I think we may not be able to accept this, but I still wanna go through this if you don't mind, because with amendment, you'll probably be in front of us very shortly. So I just wanted to put that out there, and what I'm really getting at is, there's some information relative, that's, that's not on this, relative to the, the height of that guesthouse, you know, structure and things like that, and I think you're definitely gonna need a variance for that, but why don't you kind of just go through the the, the application? I know you gave us some good materials, and then we can talk about that.
Good, Jim, if you could zoom in, well, actually, if you stay right there, that's great to start. The, the owners of this property happen to be owners in the Rhine Cliff hamlet already. They've always dreamed of owning a house with a view of the river, so now they've got it, or at least they've got a property, and they'd, they'd like to replace what's there with something slightly larger and, and, and nice. I mean, this is a many decades old building that has one bathroom in it, foundation problems, heating problems, water problems, like, like many of our houses. So they, they thought about a number of options and decided replacing it was most cost-effective, actually, and beneficial. In order to do this, it's a complicated site. It used to be part of the property to the south, and it shared a driveway. In fact, it still receives water and electric service through that property. So they were joined, I don't know that they were ever properly separated, I mean, water and, water and electric, for instance. Nonetheless, a driveway was cut in, I guess, a few, a couple of decades ago. The driveway is steep, it comes off of Slate Dock Road. This property enjoyed being referenced in Dutchess County Parcel Access as 291, I think it's 291 Rhine Cliff Road and 8 Slate Dock Road. We appropriately took action earlier this year to remove 291, because Dutchess County Emergency Services finds that confusing, and, and emergency services wouldn't show up at the right house. So we, let's see, the existing house, as you can see on the plan, sits in the southeast corner. One of the variances we will need to ask for is to put a garage in the front yard. It's, it's physically impossible to get a garage in the backyard. It's an awkward, it's kind of a funny parcel, it's a triangle with a very small road frontage on Slate Dock. After much consideration, the, there are a number of factors that go into where we place the garage. Everything to the west is downhill toward the river. Where, where the existing house is and the proposed work is relatively reasonable to build on and, and flat. And lastly, we've moved, we've adjusted the garage to suit and accommodate the residents, David and Darlene, at 4 Slate Dock Road, the house to the right. So we have our, we're not asking for setback variances, we think we have enough space, the, the owners like this, they're very determined to wanna build right where the existing house is. It was appropriately chosen, probably, when they built it many decades ago. So, so if I could jump to two variances, the first variance is for maximum gross area. The house we're proposing is 3,050 square feet. The existing one is only about 1,600 square feet, so it's larger. And I would say there, there are a few reasons we feel like it's a reasonable request. One, this is not in the hamlet, it's in the Rhine Cliff overlay district, but it's not in the hamlet. In fact, there are seven properties along the river south of this one that, before you get to the hamlet proper. And I would suggest also, one of these, those houses, another, another maybe petition or argument or reasoning is, was only built a dozen years ago, and it's 3,250 square feet, according to Dutchess County Parcel Access. So, so bigger houses have been approved, I don't think this one is, the one we're proposing is large, it's just a little larger than the 2,300 allowed by the, in the Rhine Cliff overlay zoning. And, and reasons for houses being larger, for instance, no one has one, no one builds a house with one bathroom anymore. The one we're proposing has three. Our kitchens have become bigger, we have work from home spaces now, because we, people need them. Our bedrooms have got a tiny bit larger, and lastly, most importantly, as the father of five kids, our kids won't leave. So this is a three-bedroom house, it's, it's 3,000 square feet, we think it's pretty efficient, but it exceeds the 2,300 square feet.
The next Robert, one thing on, I think, just when we, going forward with this is, and something we have to consider is, is the neighborhood and other structures in the neighborhood, and you made reference to the fact that there are some structures of similar size in the area. That would be important information for us to have, just to show that, you know, it's in keeping with the neighborhood. As you know, we have five factors that we have to consider, so that, that's, that's good information.
And I will include more if I can?
Yes, no, absolutely. In fact, I'm sure I'm gonna be asking you for more information, because, like I said, with the spoiler alert, we need information about the guesthouse and the height of it in particular, so.
Great. By the way, I'll fast forward, Mark was very gracious and, and quick to, to inspire me to move fast forward. We're looking for a garage in the front yard. In short, there's no place else to put it, and in fact, our neighbors have similar configurations, so it's, so it's not inconsistent with what's been done around us.
Again, good information to have, to be provided to the board, so that, that, that's good. And, you know, we come out there and take a look at the property, and, you know, if it's clear that because of topography, that's the only place you can put it, you know, that's obviously persuasive, so.
So lastly, I agree with you, Scott, we, we, I in fact recognize that our structure is in excess of 20 feet. It was our hope, working with the planning board and the neighbor, that one of the things that might have been done is we squashed it down to a, to a lower height, but I think you can only squeeze so much into a program. We've worked carefully and diligently with the neighbor and the planning board. So maybe as a follow-up, for more support for the zoning, I would propose that I share with you what, what the planning board asked us, they asked us for a rendering of this garage, so we'll share that. And any, any special survey information that we've, we generate, that I don't think will provide anything exciting or new, but we're diligently pursuing a resurvey and checking existing structure.
And Robert, you kind of read my mind, because I, I did see that, and any information that you, you provide, not, not any, but a lot of times, we ask for the same information that the planning board receives. I think that's good information, especially with regard to this particular structure, because, you know, just eyeballing it, it's beyond the 20 feet, it has to be. And so we need to have, we have to have real measurements on that, and then also renderings and just, if, if possible, to get an idea of what the topography is like and how these things fit into the topography. Another concern we'll, we'll have, and again, we're very transparent and upfront here, is the neighbors to the, I guess it's east, and, and to the extent that any of their, if they have river views, how that's blocked and that kind of stuff, I don't know if that's been the subject of planning board discussions.
That's not fair that you both wanna have that punishing conversation, but in fact, the planning board is, is pursuing it diligently, so we will share and hope that to maybe receive the same, will provide the same support, and hopefully get the same reaction.
Yeah, we, we don't want you to reinvent the wheel, so if you're already doing it for the planning board, we would just like to have it, because that's, that's a concern, that's something that just kind of, looking on the first page here, the, the neighbor is the one that, you know, the, the multiple blocks in, in the middle of the, of the rendering, or of the, of the site plan, excuse me. So I'd like to get an idea, right where that's circling. So I'd like to get an idea of, of how their view is diminished, if at all, I, I don't know. And, and again, we'll be doing site visits out there, so we'll get an idea that, a better idea. So we're gonna need that information. I did have a question about a denial letter, but I did find out and, and one of the beauties of having Jim here is that we have access to what's going on at the planning board more readily, and I guess there was not a denial letter, because I think it came up at the planning board, that various variances would be required through the planning board process. Does that, is that accurate?
Well, I think we, we do, we recognize that we need as many as three, if, I suppose, if Jim were to dig, maybe he'd find something else in small print, I hope not, but we think it's straightforward with the three variances. But we think it's straightforward with the three variances because we anticipate the garage being in excess of 20 feet.
Yeah, okay.
There is a provision in the town law, and I believe in Rhinebeck zoning law as well, that allows for a direct referral by the planning board to the zoning in this type of situation. And
Right.
And so there is no denial letter under those circumstances.
Right, yeah. And actually, I was educated by Kimberly about that section, which I did not know because this is, I think, the first time in almost 20 years where we've had a direct referral from the planning board. Interesting. So anyway, I, we have a pretty good idea of what you want to do. We do need some more information and you're going to need at least one more variance. I think you're right. I think it's only three. I think it just concerns that guest house. But what I like to do is to have as complete an application as possible. You know, if there's some knickknacks here and there that we don't have, we can accept subject to that. But I think in this case, what I'd suggest to the board and I'd make an application is that, that we did not, not accept the application tonight, but with the additional information you're going to provide us in the upcoming weeks, that the application be amended to include the additional variance. We get the additional information with regard to the renderings, in particular, with regard to the guest house and the, and the height of that. We really need to see that. Any information we can get on any visual impairment there may be as a result of this to your neighbor or to the neighbor. I think really anything, more is always better. So.
That sounds great. I will include photos, a rendering, survey information and any changes. I suspect I would resubmit an entire package.
Okay. And you're pretty close. We just need that. But that's, you know, a third of what you're going to be requesting pretty much. So that's, that's why I, I'm going to make a motion that at this time, a point in time, we not accept the application. Because there's certainly going to be, we're going to need at least one more variance. We need to have additional information to properly review this. And we anticipate that we'll have you back on, on the, on the next meeting. So I'd make a motion that we not accept the application in its current form. Any, I've been talking a lot. Any questions, concerns that my board members have for, for Robert? And the application?
I have one question. Hi, Robert. It's Richard Kopasinski.
Hi, Richard.
Did you say that the driveway was cut from Slate Dock decades ago?
I tried to find out who built it and Jeff Decker resurfaced it. I thought I was told he built it not that long ago, but he said, oh, no, it was built before. I think.
Jeff, Jeff Decker said it was built before?
Before, he did not build it. It was built by someone else. And he's, and I think I looked at deeds and if I'm not mistaken, the property may have been separated off as early as much as 40 years ago. I didn't concern myself really with the history of the ownership as much as just wanting to know that it's legal and we have legal access to Slate Quarry Road. I needed to know that when I went to Duchess County Emergency Services to change the legal address.
Yes, I would, I would just recheck that because, you know, I am in Rhine Cliff and that, that road from Slate Quarry, that driveway up to that house was a terrific idea. But as far as I know, that was done in the last three years.
No. No, I, I drove up it myself when the previous owner bought it five years ago, six years ago. So, but I wouldn't be surprised if you told me it was 12 or 15 years old, years old. Henry Barron's would know because he used to share the driveway with this property.
Right. Yes, I know.
Someone affectionately known as the Duchess owned this house with a fellow. Right.
Yeah.
I could research that. So I have an answer for the board when, when I see you next.
All right. Have you, has there been discussion with the Barrons about, you know, what is proposed here?
Yes, they're intimately involved. My first recommendation to the owners was to meet Henry to the south and David to the east and bring them a cup of coffee or a bottle of wine. And that went well. They are talking and I think it's going well.
Okay. Because input from the neighbors is also very important, especially in this particular situation, but, but it's always important. So anyway, any other board members have any questions or concerns?
I just have a question. Hello?
Yes, Tim.
Oh, yeah, good. I just have a question in terms of the, what is, what is the 20 feet you're talking about on the, on the garage?
You're only allowed a height of 20 feet. That's the maximum height that this guest house or garage can be. And if you look at the last page right there, yep. You scroll down, there you go. You know, eyeballing it, it's got to be more than 20 feet.
Yeah.
So that, that's where that, that just kind of stuck out and Robert, on the, on the first part of it, on the first page, had all the, the heights, for example, for the, the new dwelling. I think it's going to be 32 feet with a, and 35 is allowed and you know, that kind of stuff. And it's going to be a little bit taller than what exists there, things like that. So there you go, right there. That's what we're looking for, for the guest house. Because it's clear that it's going to exceed.
Right. Yeah, I think it, I think it's at least 23 now. So I will give you a fixed number. That's, that's considered of the, what we think is the final grade too.
Okay. That'd be great. All right. So anyway, I'll make a motion again that we not accept the application at this point in time. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor, Catherine?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tim Allenbrook?
Yes.
Richard Kopasinski?
Yes.
And is Tim Ekinopoly here? I guess he's not. All right.
I think he is, Scott. I think he might be under iPhone.
Okay. All right. Well, we have four. So anyway, Robert, you know what we, we need in order to accept the application the next time around and and hopefully that'll happen in December.
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. That was the only piece of new business, other than the presentation. Next, we go on to the public hearings. And is there anybody here on McLeod?
I'm here on behalf of McLeod, Darren Davidovich from the Art.
Hi Darren, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Is there anybody on the Zoom call who is interested in this application? And I can only see four or five folks because of the application being put up. All right. If anybody, it does become interested in this application, all I ask is that you identify yourself and where you reside and you can address whatever questions or concerns you have to Darren about this application. But Darren, you've been through this before. So if you could just reacquaint the board with the, the, the application.
Certainly. I'm not sure I can keep up with the slides, but.
Well, we'll tell Jim to slow down.
Sorry, I was trying to find your site plan. I had 74 pages. I had to look and remember where it was.
Actually, you know, very, very early on, there's a little bit more in the way of background information and, and the site plan as well. So like second slide in, I think it is. Yeah. And is this the abbreviated proposal, Jim? Actually, there was a shorter version of this presentation that was sent in for the last meeting. Same thing, but just with like 50 fewer slides, which will probably save us some time if we can open that one up. If not, I can work off this one. It's not a problem. It just jumped more to the point and got a little bit away from some of the history because this is a historic property as well. From last month, let's see. Yeah, we used it at last month's meeting. I sort of had emailed it after the fact, just as a slim down. It's got ZBA in the title of the presentation.
I don't know if I have that one, actually.
Okay, that's fine. We can.
First official meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah. We can, we can talk from this one. Not a problem. So, you know, we're here tonight to talk about 531 Old Wurtenberg Road. Probably that site plan you had a few minutes ago, Jim, is a good one then. And basically what we have is just over an 11 acre parcel. You can see it's sort of shaped like a boot. It's located at the intersection of Primrose Hill Road, Schultz Hill Road, Wurtenberg Road and Old Wurtenberg Road, Old Wurtenberg Road being the frontage and a private road. And a little bit over 11 acres in size, shaped like a boot. You can see the development is primarily concentrated to the toe area of the boot. And what we have here are six existing structures. Most of them historic. I'll get to that in a minute. But they're all numbered. The first structure is the main house. It's a 3,000 square foot structure. Just behind it is what we're calling the little house. It was originally a summer kitchen, 178 square feet. Then the next biggest structure on the site after the main house is what we're calling the main barn, number three there. That's an 1,874 square foot structure. Number four, just a little bit to the south there, is an existing run in shed, not a historic building. This building was built sometime in the late 1990s. It appears maybe early 2000s. It's one of the few structures on the site that's not one of the historic barns that originally existed. And then just to the left of it there, we have what we're calling the poolhouse. Currently, it's more of a poultry shed. It had one point had poultry in it. And that structure is back up, is 495 square feet in size. So those structures all exist on the site today. There's actually a sixth structure there pointing to that small wellhouse two foot by two foot. So, you know, four, maybe five square feet in size. So, you know, for purposes of tonight, I'm not focused too much on that, but there is a little wellhouse there, which is the sixth structure on the site. And what our clients are proposing is just a reimagining of the, of the property. The plan is to keep all of the existing structures in place. They're all in significant need of rehabilitation. And the only structure that's destined to be torn down and removed is that late 1990s, early 2000s run in shed. And the plan would be to just simply replace that with a building that's very similar in scale, en massing in size. The building would actually be 34 square feet larger that we're proposing, but a complete replacement of that nonhistoric building. And that is number four there on the plan. So these are all still numbered the same way. And this is just a, you know, a more detailed version of our site plan. This is actually our landscape plan. And the planning board, by the way, has seen this. We've been through a number of meetings with them. They have approved this with one contingency, and that is that we come to this board and seek two variances. And the two variances that we're, we're seeking, number one is for the amount of square footage that we have on this site. Both in the existing, but more importantly, in the future scenario. We all totaled will have 2,912 square feet if this site plan is built out. And of course, we're in the RC5 zone, which only allows 1,500 square feet. So we're 1,412 square feet more in terms of building area and accessory structures than we are actually allowed. And the second variance that we're seeking is that building number three is proposed to be a detached accessory dwelling. So it's quite a large barn. It's, it's, as I mentioned before, 1,870 square feet in size. And we are proposing to convert that to largely gym and, and things like that. But there is a sleeping component to it. So it would be deemed a detached accessory dwelling and it would meet the requirements for the planning board as a detached accessory dwelling. The issue being that it's a large building and it exceeds the 900 square foot limitation that's allowed when you do a detached accessory dwelling in this zone. So that's the second of the two variances that we're before the board to seek tonight. Just a little bit more background, the clients are also proposing an in-ground swimming pool with a separate spa component, a small vine arbor for privacy, a vegetable garden and a small tool shed, which is an additional structure as well. It's included in the square footage numbers that I gave you. It's 80 square feet in size and that tool shed is simply designed to be a place where you keep rakes and shovels and wheelbarrows and probably things related to the swimming pool. Pool floats, maybe some chlorine and skimmers and that kind of thing. But the, the big highlights are at one point we had proposed moving some of these buildings around. That's been drastically scaled down. And we're proposing simply to restore, rebuild them in place and keep the clustering of the buildings, which is deemed to be one of the most historical aspects of this parcel. And of course, even with the addition of some of these new components, everything is still concentrated in that original development area, that original portion of the site that was developed, which is the toe of the boot here, and it preserves the long views out to the field. And it also does a lot to preserve existing landscape and tree lines. We're going to in fact recreate an orchard that originally existed on the site and enhance some of the buffering from the roadways. But if you look back and we've submitted this through the historic photos, the site was always developed in this portion and, you know, pretty much everything we're proposing here with some, you know, some tweaks is putting things back more so than it is adding any new areas of development to the site. And as much as the board wants to go through, we have details on each of the buildings here. We show existing condition photos. We show floor plans. We show, you know, some of the deficiencies in those photos. So you can see what's wrong with some of these buildings. Foundation problems, roof problems, boat walls, things like that. And we've also submitted elevations for the proposed conditions on each of the buildings. And I'm happy to go through any or all of that if, if pleases the board or I can pause there for a moment.
Yeah, the, the, the application was very extensive and, and and thank you for that. The, so, you know, essentially the, the buildings are all staying in the same place. They're just being refurbished with the exception of the run in shed, which is going to be, going to be demolished and replaced by a slightly larger structure, but that'll be basically in the same spot.
Correct.
And all right, so.
On the main house, is the footprint of that expanding substantially on the main house?
It is not. At one point we had proposed a much more substantial renovation to that, including a very, very large addition off the back. We're actually going to keep this footprint inclusive of an addition that was done also in the 1990s, a fairly insensitive addition. But you know, what we've submitted is a proposal to sort of bring that more into line with what the house looks like and a little bit less in line with something that would have been grafted on in the 1990s.
Okay.
Talking about the thing that's, I'm sorry, you go Catherine.
No, I just can say, so essentially, except for that one shed and then the new little tool shed, the footprints are going to be the same.
Correct. You know, give or take a few inches here and there, but that, yeah, they're the same.
Let me guess, the diplomatically put insensitive addition to the main house is as, as you look at the, the photo showing View West from Old Wurtenberg Road, it's on the right side of the house?
View West from Old Wurtenberg, yeah, it's on the right side of the house. And in this, in this exhibit, you can see the last two photos, I think, do a really good job of pointing out some insensitivity.
It's an architectural term, isn't it?
It's certainly a diplomatic term. And I agree with you. It's, well, whatever. Anyway.
So we'll do our best to, you know, bring that in line, which is what you see in the lower, in the, in the hand drawn sketches is, is the the proposed condition. And then of course, the circles and ovals up top are the existing condition. And then anything in purple in these exhibits shows you anything that might change. The only thing that would be incorrect here is the west elevation is not going to change at all. The historic committee had asked us not to change the front door. So we've, we've agreed not to touch that. So that'll stay just the way it is in that middle rendering. So that'll stay just the way it is in that middle rendering.
Uh, I don't have any questions, but I, the, I think my board members may, um, so um, board members, questions concerning.
Yeah, would we work for you Darren for a site visit?
With, I'm sorry, would what work?
Would, would we work for you to set up a site visit?
Absolutely. Yep, I could arrange that.
I don't have any comments.
No, it looks, it looks very complete.
I, 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 I have a comment. Um, first of all, I'd like to be on the site uh, visit as well. Um, hi Darren, it's Richard.
Hi, Richard.
Um, um, Catherine was saying that, that uh, the, the footprint on the buildings, the two variances, uh, one is from nine hundred square feet to eighteen, almost nineteen hundred square feet, and the other one is from fifteen hundred square feet to three thousand square feet. So where is that extra square footage? Is it the height if, if footprints are not going to be changed?
Well, the, to answer the question in the order you, you put them out there. Building number three, which is the main barn, is a two-story barn as it exists today. So each floor plate of that building um, is nine hun- well, one floor is nine hundred and eight square feet, the other is nine hundred and sixty-six square feet. So as it sits today, it's eighteen hundred and seventy-four square feet of, of habitable area. But the footprint of that building is one thousand seventy-one square feet. So um, it's the two-story condition which totals that eighteen hundred and change. And it's only really an issue um, for, for this particular variance, because the code limits you to nine hundred square feet in a detached accessory dwelling. So that particular use limits our square footage. And then as far as overall square footage goes, it's, you know, it's again, it's a sum of all of the living area that we're using here. So footprint and living area being two different numbers. And in that scenario, we are, you know, over the allowable, but um, we sit there today over the allowable as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you, you're not increasing very much the, you know, what's there now versus what you propose as far as, you know, what's allowed.
Total increase is um, exactly one hundred and fourteen square feet, and eighty of that is the tool shed. Um, the rest is just the slight um, expansion and reconfiguration of that building four.
Okay, can you give me that number again? The first one is a total of what, one fourteen?
One fourteen um, more to, you know, in the proposed, right, on the site today.
And exists.
Yep, and eighty square feet of it is the tool shed.
The tool shed, okay.
The other thirty-four sque- square feet is that building four, just growing by thirty-four square feet.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? And um.
I don't.
And uh, Jim, does it, can you see, are there, is there anybody else out there who might? I, i- is anybody, if, if there's anybody out there who's interested in this application, again, I can only see about five boxes. Um, either, you know, put up your hand or do something, just indicate to Jim that you wish to um, you know, ask some questions or have some concerns about the application. Jim, do you, do you see anything?
I'll, I'll scan for us. I'll scan for a second here, Scott.
I just, I don't want to miss anybody if there's somebody out there.
No, I'll, I'll just let it go for a second. We'll see if anyone, um, you know, turn on your screen or let me know in the chat box. I did want to note, Scott, um, and, and I'm sure the ZBA knows this, but the planning board resolution actually supported granting these variances uh, as they encourage and enable preservation of historic site and structures. So I thought it was important to point that out.
Yep, no, and, and, and I think that was pointed out actually uh, the first time around too, because uh, that approval existed when we got the application, I believe.
Right. So I'm not seeing anyone who wants to comment, Scott.
Okay. All right, well.
I just want to say, I just want to say that, I just want to say that it's a terrific presentation.
Uh, well, thank you. We have a really, really good team who put a lot of work into this, so thank you.
That's apparent.
Yeah.
Catherine, do you?
Yeah, do, do we have anybody? I thought that I had raised my hand on this one, but to do the resolution, but I'm not sure, and I don't see anybody's name there.
Um, your name is actually on it.
Oh, is it? Okay, I was looking.
It is.
Okay, now that's good.
If you look at the grid, and, and unfortunately, at the bottom right-hand uh, portion of a, of the grid, your, your name appears.
Okay, it's, I'm not seeing it on the, the one I'm looking at, but that, oh, maybe I'm looking at the wrong month, sorry.
I also took copious notes, just in case you wanted to extricate yourself from this.
Oh, I, I can, I can do this one, but if you'd like to do.
No, no, I know. I'm just kidding you, that's all, so.
Okay.
But uh, you're officially down for this, but if, if it's a, an issue, that's not a problem. We, we can get somebody else to do it, or.
Okay, no, it should be fine.
Okay. All right, uh, without, uh, since I, uh, I think we've asked every question we need to ask, and uh, we have all the information we need, um, at this point in time, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and that's uh, Tim Ekinopoly.
Yeah.
And uh, I'll go through the roll call. Uh, Catherine?
Yes.
Me, yes. Uh, Tim Allenbrook?
Yes.
And Richard, you're there somewhere? Yes, okay. All right, so uh, um, Darren, the, the public hearing has been closed. We have sixty-two days in order to render a resolution. I anticipate that uh, it'll probably happen at the next meeting, and um, and thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good job, Darren.
Thank you.
Quick question. It was Catherine and Richard that wanted to do the site visit, correct?
Yeah, well, uh, well, 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 all probably, I'm not saying we're all, but I'm, I'm sure Catherine will go, I'll probably go out there too. We can all make our individual arrangements uh, with, with Darren. We don't have to go out at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm out there almost every day, so.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I, I was going to try and arrange uh, something maybe on the, because I know Tim and Scott may have to go on the weekend.
Right.
Yeah, I'm pretty much tied to the weekend.
I got this job thing that keeps me preoccupied, preoccupied about sixty hours a week.
Okay, and Darren, I'll see if I can get everybody settled on a, on a day together, and if not, we'll set up a couple of things separately.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Catherine, I'll, Catherine, I'll try and jump in there with you, so uh.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Count me in too, if you can.
Yeah, I would think everybody probably wants to go out, so.
I'm in.
All right, we'll look forward to it.
All right, thank you, Darren.
Thanks, everybody.
And uh, so the next matter that's on is um, it's under old business. Uh, it's uh, a sonato, but uh, actually, um, as I recollect and as I believe the record shows, uh, what we, we chose to do, because there was an issue as to whether that um, that sign that has to be up in the front of the property, whether it was up or not, um, we, we decided to um, have an abundance of caution uh, to um, uh, continue the public hearing. Um, so until we got um, proof that the um, notice, uh, the, you know, the, the little sign thingy that goes out in the front of the property was actually put in place, we got that, we received that information. Um, so um, anyway, this is actually a part of the public hearings, a section out the old business. And um, a- at this point, I just to make a motion that we reopen the public hearing, and can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that's uh, Tim Ekinopoly. Richard?
Hi.
Yes, to me? Tim?
Yep.
Okay, and Catherine?
Yes.
All right, uh, so the public hearing is open. Again, uh, we received the information we needed just to button this thing up and make sure that we had uh, notice taken care of. Um, is there anyone here um, on this application?
Yeah, hi, my name is Richard Countryman, and I'm here from Solar Generation on behalf of Mr. Oznado.
Okay, and um, Jim, I don't know, can you survey who's out there? The, the, is, is anyone here who is concerned about or would like to ask some questions about this application? If so, could you say so in the chat or wave or do something and, and let uh, Jim know about that?
I don't believe so, Scott. It looks like we only have one member of the public on, and I believe they're here for another matter.
Okay, all right, uh, so um, Richard, I, I, I don't know that we really need to go through the application again. We've done it a couple of times.
Yeah.
Um, uh, let me ask uh, my board members, uh, do you, uh, anybody have any questions or concerns about this uh, application?
I do not.
Okay, I will tell you, I did go out and uh, take a look at um, the project and uh, the, and Richard, the flags are still there. And um.
Very good.
And, and met with uh, Mr. Uh, As- Asanato, and um, anyway, it, it, uh, the topography and everything else um, was in keeping with, with what has been represented to us as far as uh, buffering with the uh, neighbors next door and buffering from the river and, and all that kind of stuff. Um, so um, if, if there aren't any questions, concerns or anything else for uh, for Richard, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Uh, do I have a second?
I second.
Tim Ekinopoly, okay, great, and um, the rest of the board members, I'll go through. Richard?
I, yes.
Okay, Catherine?
Yes.
Uh, yes for myself, and obviously, yes, uh, yes, uh, Tim Allenbrook?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so the public hearing has been uh, closed. Um, I believe uh, that uh, Tim Ekinopoly um, wrote up the resolution on this case, and Tim, you want to take us, you, you want, you want to take us through it?
Yeah, you guys can all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so this is the resolution of the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals in the matter of an area variance application of Michael Ozanado. Case number ten eighteen, or one thousand eighteen. Whereas, background applicant, the applicant is Michael Ozanado. Refer to air, after this, the applicant. The applicant is represented before this board by Richard Countryman of the firm of Solar Generation. Property involved, this appeal involves property located at one twenty-two Morton Road in the town of Rhinebeck, and which bears the tax partial number one three five zero eight nine dash six zero six nine dash zero zero dash four zero zero four zero three dash zero 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 zero. The applicant's property is eighteen point six five acres in an area, in area and is uh, is located in the HP twenty zoning district. Description of project, uh, proposed project. The applicant proposes to construct a nineteen point two kilowatt ground mount solar array. The applicant does not meet HP twenty side setback of a hundred and fifty feet uh, as listed in the zoning table one two five attachment three, therefore requiring a side yard variance of fifty feet. Uh, two, ZBA review. Timeliness of appeal. The applicant filed an appeal with the board on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the CEO's determination appeal, uh, determination appealed from initially dated July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and revised on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Thus, the applicant is timely as required by section one two five dash one two five B of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This application.
Tim, can I stop you just for a sec? Um, Jim, do we have the um, the revised, uh, uh, this may be the original resolution that's up?
I do have the original draft. Are we using the revised version?
Yes, we're using the revised, I believe. That's what, that's what it is.
Let me pull that, I just noticed that as well. Let me pull that up.
Okay.
I apologize.
Are we good?
Yeah, yeah, just wait, wait a second. We, if, we had the, 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 the draft up there and um, without the revisions. And you, and you're reading through the revisions, so it's not consistent with what's up, so I just want to make sure that the public has sure, is, is viewing what is being read.
Yep.
So just give Jim a second to get that up.
I have it, I just need to get it on the screen here for everyone. Okay, does everyone see the screen now? I think this is the correct.
Yeah, can you make it just a little bit bigger? Is that?
Yep, I'm going to zoom in for anyone's. Everything takes a step to get through.
Yeah. And when you got old eyes. There we go, that's good.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, I think we have the right one now.
No, no.
Okay, Tim, take it away.
Okay, uh, do you want me to start again that?
No, no, but I think we're at um, at, might as well start with Seeker, I think, is where you were.
Yeah, this matter was previously before the planning board per which a special use permit and site plan approval was granted upon the condition of receiving any necessary variances from the ZBA. The planning board classified the proposed project as a type two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPA, on June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The ZBA accepts this determination, and no further environmental review is required. Referral and responses. The application was referred to the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. The Rhinebeck Planning Board responded on October sixth, two thousand twenty-one, stating they found no significant planning or environmental concerns with the requested variance, and noted that the planning board approved the project at its July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, and discussing the site visit. The structure will have ampertory coverage from the neighbor and limited profile will be visible from the river. The planning board approved the application for both special use permit one, uh, one twenty-five dash forty-seven and site plan. The application was also uh, referred to the Town of Rhinebeck, uh, CAB dash WAC. According to the planning board's approval resolution, the CAB uh, conducted a site visit and found the proposed work was consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one twenty-five of the zoning law. No additional comments from the CAB slash WAC were received by ZBA. Public hearing. A public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the public hearing was held virtually pursuant to New York State legislation uh, S five thousand one dash A four thousand one, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene meetings during the current pandemic via video conferencing and/or telephone conferencing. The public was thus afforded the opportunity, opportunity to view the uh, participant during the public hearing remotely. No member of the public spoke on this application. The public hearing was closed on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Site visit. Uh, Scott, I don't have you in on this site visit. I didn't know you went there, but on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, ZBA members Timothy Ekinopoly and Richard Kopaczynski visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions. Properly characteristic, uh, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment, and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The ground mount solar system will be close to the house. System will not be seen by the neighbors due to trees and bushes and a small profile seen from the Hudson River. No business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Uh, three, findings of fact and conclusions of law. Balancing test. In our view, the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. We determine that the variance requested should be granted, because there is no detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of this variance. That's uh, six NYCRR, section six one seven dot uh, point five C. Six NYCRR, section six one seven dot, uh, point five C sixteen. Consideration of the, uh, five factor in balancing test and our determination. We have considered the five factors required by section one twenty-five dash one twenty-four. See one of the town. Of Rhinebeck zoning, uh, law as follows. If the variance is granted, will they cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. The location of the solar ground mount is blocked from the neighbor's view to the north by trees and bushes. And will have a small profile visible from the Hudson River. B, can the benefits sought be, uh, by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the app? Appellate to pursue other than an area variance. We find the answer to this question is yes, the system could have been installed in the front yard field. But would require extensive trench trenching for low voltage line. To the house. Is the requested area variance substantial? We find the answer to this question is no. Ground mount system will be close to the house, not viewable by any neighbors. The south side of the structure will be black. Glass. Uh, glass and white. And a white back. Glass and the back will be white. Height of the system will be approximately twelve feet off a grade. The setback requested will be. Uh, the setback requested will be small and not visible from adjoining property or the public roadway. Will a proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. As stated above, the structure will not be visible by neighbors or the Hudson River. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes, the system could have been put in the front yard, but due to the difficulty in trenching. To the house, the location selected, selected makes practical sense. Minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors of balance test, we must also determine if this requested variance. Is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant? We find the answer to this question is yes, system will be close to the house, to the house to reduce trenching. Cost and still have favorable sun exposure for power production. Uh, now, there, now therefore be it resolved based on. The facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. The ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the app applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety and welfare. Of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. Ground nut system will be out of view by all neighbors and exposure. Uh, and expose only a small profile to the Hudson River. Section two, the granting of these variants is expression expressly contingent upon the following. System be installed in staked out area and as drawn by solar gener- generation in its site plan map dated. Five sixteen twenty-one. And the following all and follow all building and electrical codes. Section three, the granting of this variance shall be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment. To the town of Rhinebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with its application. In full compliance with article fourteen fee reimbursement. Of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section four, the granting of these variants does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and or approvals. The proposed structures must. Be constructed and conforming with the applications and plans submitted. Section five. Section five, the area variance shall be null void. Uh, unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. I make a motion to approve the resolution. Actually, it's red.
Okay, first, first, uh, first of all, I want to say good job, Tim. And second of all, uh, before we get to that, um. We need to have just a brief discussion. Um, I I thought all the points that that you made were good. I mean, I I went out there and, uh. Um, it it would be totally impractical in my mind to put the thing out in the front yard. I mean, you have, uh. A garage, you have, uh, the topography, you know, slopes up and you have the vegetable garden, you have all the other stuff there. And, um, to me, the location was, um, just made it in absolute sense. Uh, the one thing, Gretchen, I don't know where, I'll, I'll let you, I'll leave it to you wherever you want to throw it in. On paragraph eight, and I apologize for not telling you Tim about this. Uh, I went out there on Saturday, which was November, uh, thirteenth and met with, uh, the applicant, so. Um, Gretchen, just throw it in anywhere in, uh, in paragraph eight that I went out there. Uh, on the thirteenth. Um, any other, any? Comments, uh, about, uh, the resolution about the application from any of, uh, the board members? Anybody?
Yeah, this is, uh, Kim, I just have a quick, um. On paragraph nine, there's a citation at the end in parentheses. Uh, that citations, it says six NYCRR, section six one seven point five C sixteen. Uh, that's actually a speaker citation, so I think that's in the wrong place. So I would just, um, cross that out.
Yeah, okay, I see that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kim?
Nope, everything, uh, there was, it looked like there was a few words, um, that. There was no spacing, so that might just be like a grammatical, uh, if you do like run a grammar check on it, it might, uh, catch those. I, that might be, I think that's a formatting thing.
Um, yeah, I think that was, uh, when I sent you the original version, when you send back the PDF, it kind of all. Did that.
Yeah, it was a formatting issue and I, I guess that didn't, um, when I ran the spell check and grammar check, I didn't catch it, but anyway. Those were just, uh, minor comments.
Okay. All right, um, last chance, any questions, concerns, comments from any of the, uh, the board members? All right.
Read really well, Tim.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, uh, Tim, I guess, uh, now we can make a motion.
Okay, I motion to approve the resolution as written.
And I'll second that.
Uh, I just, uh, it should be, um. Except the, with the suggested comments and changes.
With with the suggested comments, right, with it, with the, um, the minor, uh, changes that we've talked about.
Correct.
Uh, Gretchen, can you do, um, the roll call?
Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Tim E?
Yes.
Dave? Oh, no, sorry, it's an old one. Uh, Tim A?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes. All right, approved. All right, good job. Okay, and that brings us, uh, now to the, um. The last, uh, portion of our agenda and that is, uh, discussion of Red Wing and, um. Uh, I don't know. Jim, can you? There we go. So, um, we, we have the, uh, the resolution, uh, that's going to be done, um, and and will be. Done by the, by the next meeting. Um, and, um, you know, it's obviously been a very, um, complex, uh, case and. Heavily, uh, litigated, I don't want to say litigated, but there, there's been a lot of information provided to us by. Uh, multiple sources and just, uh, I, I. I spent, um, a, a little bit of time today going through, you know, my notes and going through all the stuff and. You know, the, I, obviously, the, the issue is, um, you know, the notice of violation and whether there was a need, uh, for, uh. Special use permit and site, uh, plan approval in order to install this access road and. Um, there, there was a lot of discussion. These are just my thoughts. So, once I get done, I'll try to be brief. I just want to hear from everybody else and and see how. How you feel about the situation. Uh, I remember the court decision. I went through the court decision and as best as I can read. Um, going through it, the, uh, you know, Red Wing, um, it was found that Red Wing had a vested right to mine in ninety-four acres of that. Entire, uh, area. And, um, as I recollect, it was basically the thirty-seven point five of the existing mine. And then, uh, there was an additional fifty-six point five, uh, acres. And that was it. There was nothing else. Um, you know, to me, reading through it, there was no hint. Or mention of Red Wing not having to get, uh, any kind of, uh, approvals. Uh, in order to, um, you know, continue mining there. And, um, I, I know that's what the applicant is, is saying. That the decision gives them basically carte blanche to do whatever they want without. Uh, these approvals, um, or, you know, going through the special use and. A permit and the site plan approval. And I just don't see that. I don't see that there's any way to read it. Uh. The only thing that the appellate division did in my mind was to, uh, say that Red Wing did have a vested right to ninety-four acres. Um, and, um, and that was that and. And then, uh, uh, you know, going forward, um, you know, i- is this roadway, um. Part of the mining operation? And, you know, in my mind, the, the only reason it's there. And the only reason it was expanded was in order to facilitate. The mining operation of, of right now, the existing mine. Um, and, um, you know, because, uh, Labot, they, they can't get access through the, the Labatski driveway. So that's what they built it up. So obviously to me. Just common sense would tell you that. Um, you know, this is being used, uh, you know, for, for the, um. You know, mining, uh, of the existing mine in the, in the, you know, mining overlay district. And, uh, you know, so I think it, I think it does come under certainly the, um. Um, you know, one twenty-five, one oh one, um, you know, which. You know, it talks about the, the need for a special use permit and site plan comes under one twenty-five sixty-eight FF. Um, you know, it's part of. And it's outside of the mining overlay district. I mean, the, the roadway is outside the mining overlay district. It's part and parcel to me of the mining that goes on. Um, you know, in the mining overlay district, it, it's an expansion of. You know, what is, what is, uh, you know, pre-existing non-conforming use, it's an expansion of that. And as a result, I think. You, you know, just for me, common sense, um. Reading of this is, is that they, they do need to do, uh, uh. You know, then you do need to get a special use permit. They do need to get site plan approval. Um, and and that's kind of just the way I saw it. The other thing for me a- as well is, you know, that. There's a lot of testimony that, you know, there's going to be some pretty heavy traffic, you know, coming in and out of there. We don't know how much. There's been, it was conflicting testimony on that. Uh, but, you know, I gotta believe that you, you know, there should be, um. Some kind of driveway access permitting process. I mean, they're, they're coming on to a town road, you know, White School House Road. And, uh, for, you know, to me, uh, it just makes sense that, you know, when you're having. Access from this mine and you're pulling out all this material on these very large, um, you know, trucks and and the traffic is going to increase. That there should be, uh, a permitting process. There should be some review of, you know, the access onto the town road and and and, uh. I, I forget, I think that was under the high, the highway law or whatever, but. Uh, to me, um. I understand the arguments made by the applicant, but, um, to me, I, I just felt that. You know, the, the decision clearly does not absolve them of having, uh, to get, um, you know, the special use permit or the site plane approval. Yeah, I think the roadway is part and parcel of, of the, the mining activity and because. It's an increase in the, uh, you know, uh, non-conforming use, uh, I, I think the applicable sections apply and. They need to get these things. So that's my take on it and I'd like to hear what the rest of the gang has to say.
Yeah, when I went out there to take a look, I, I was quite surprised by the size of the driveway. And, uh, and just, you know. It just doesn't make sense that you would not have to go through a site plan approval. Or even talk to the, the, uh, Rhinebeck Highway Department about what your plans are, you know, and, um. The one thing that. I was unsettled about, they came in with. Different data of their other mines and how much they. Would, uh, pull out of there and it, it all seemed like very small numbers, like ten trucks, you know, twelve trucks. The next time asked, it was up to like twenty-five trucks. And then the last time it was up to, you know, forty-five or, you know, don't know, might be more. So, I don't know, I just think coming out onto White School House. You know, if you consider going both ways of a hundred trucks. I, yeah, I think that needs to be kind of looked at. Um, I don't know if we can do it through, through the zoning, but. But it, I think it really needs to be kind of looked at, especially coming out onto Sleep Cory Road. Uh, where they plant, where they, uh, plan on doing that. Um, so I just kind of have a very unsettled feeling about the whole thing, really. I. I think they kind of. Tried to do a shortcut on us and, uh. They got stopped, basically. That's my two cents.
Anybody else have two or three cents even? Catherine?
Yes.
Richard, you're muted.
Oh, or Richard.
Um, yeah, I have, I have some comments. Um. I, I, I mean, basically, Scott, I agree with the points that you made and just, um. You know, to kind of reiterate that I think there's any number of places where the town reserves the right to require. A special use permit and a site plan. And it's not just one instance, there's a number of instances in the zoning law where that's required. And all applicable to both the mining of the thirty-seven acres, any mining of the new acreage. And the construction of the road. Uh, it's also clear, I think, in the code that there's permits needed for roads like that. Coming, coming out and joining, uh, the town roads regardless of, of what the use is, there needs to be a permit required for that. So, um. I, I agree with Scott on the points that he made. Uh, there's not any place that I really diverge from his thinking on that. And, um. I think it's just, I'll just reiterate, it's clear in, in a number of places that they need a special use permit and a site plan. And that, the, those are the points at which the town then has some. Say in terms of, um, the amount of traffic or how that traffic's handled or any of those other issues that were brought up by. By, uh, people in the community. I think that's where those things would be addressed.
Yeah, and and I think it's going to be required on any o- other activity they want to do out there. I mean, that this. This court decision, it was, was silent as to any of that and was very specific as to what it was granting. Um, so I, I just, I, I just don't see it. The, the one thing I, I neglected to, to mention, I think that, you know, all of the applicable. All, all of the sections, um, that were cited, uh, in the notice of violation apply except probably. One twenty-five dash sixty-eight NN. Which, uh, talks about major excavation and or tree clearing. And as I recollect, there's a, um. I think there's a specific, uh, e- exemption or provision saying that. Uh, mining operations, uh, you know, don't apply if, if I recall correctly. And, and, uh, so, so that would not apply because to me, again, this roadway is just an expansion. Of the mining operation that was there and was in operation up until, I think it was twenty thirteen, when Mr. Labatski decided to close down. Uh, his driveway, uh, to them. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's clearly, uh, in my mind, um. You know, part of the mining operation and and an expansion of the non-conforming use, and that's why all this stuff comes into play. But I don't think, um, one twenty-five sixty-eight NN applies, uh. That, that's the one thing I probably, one that probably doesn't apply.
Um, but I, I do think, and Scott, um, help me if I'm wrong on this, but that it was. I think clear that any expansion of mining operations. Requires an, a new site plan review and special use permit, so.
Absolutely.
You know, but mining is going to take place over years and years and it's going to, the mining activity is going to grow or change because of. Conditions and all of those need to have special use permits.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I, it, it's, we're dealing with the roadway today, uh, but, you know, in, in the future. Uh but you know, in in the future, uh absolutely.
Oh, and I I agree, the roadway is an expansion of what they're doing. It it's not for some other purpose, it's an expansion.
It's it's the only purpose it serves. I mean that's I because they're landlocked, that you can't get to the uh you know, the whatever life of mine, the the mine that exists there, the the original thirty-seven point five. If 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 Lovatski was still giving him access, that wouldn't have been created, so it's, you know, it's pretty clear. Anyway.
I think that was all all my comments.
Anybody have any other comments, concerns or?
With two or three cents?
Uh or four perhaps?
No, yes, I might have four cents into this. Um but yes, I agree with everyone's been saying and but basically, I think that the expansion of the mining is totally opposite of what the comprehensive plan was um hoping for or what they had in mind. Um with that said, in twenty fifteen, the town amended its zoning law with the adoption of local law number four, and then reduced the mining overlay district boundaries to only include the life of mine land area. Um so I believe that the special use permit and site plan approval was required for the installation of the access road for the mine as everyone else thought as well. Also, that the road that the road was continually worked on in violation of the um notice of violation and what Red Wing should be held accountable, in my opinion, for the continued construction and total disregard of the notice of violation and cease and desist order. Um th- those two photos said so much from one I think that um uh was done in twenty fifteen and the other done October twenty-first on our site visit. I mean, it 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 was huge, the difference that the the cutting of the trees and the widening of the roads had, so um that's my two, three, four cents.
Yeah, and and I actually um was around uh to to visit the uh the original um path. That's really what it was, it was it was kind of a path. Uh and and it it's enormous, the difference between the two, as far as you know, the um the continuing on, I know there was um the applicant talked about the uh the stay and the fact that uh you know, because they made the appeal, they felt that they had a stay and and they do have a stay. Um I don't recall anybody, uh and maybe it's just a a matter of first impression uh really being able to say what that stay state, was it, you know, staying um y- you know, uh financial penalties, uh was it staying the activities? I mean, to me, common sense would lend itself to the fact that, all right, i- i- you you're 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 you you're not allowed to go forward and do whatever, you know, do what you want, just because you filed an appeal. Um you know, the the stay is, it does not allow them uh to do that, but that's not in our, you know, that's not our 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 concern, really. I mean, it's um it it's an interesting question. I think I asked all counsel to give me some case law on it, and I don't think there's really thing anything definitive saying that this stay, you know, allows um the applicant to go forward and do whatever the heck they want, so I think that's kind of unclear. Um and um but I mean, but again, to me, what is clear and just it makes, you know, common sense to me is this is an increase in the non-conforming use. I mean, it's it's outside uh we know, the um the uh the area, uh the mining overlay district, and it's it's an increase in a non-conforming use and you know, the statute, I think the statutes, multiple statutes are very clear that you need to have a special use permit and a site and site plan approval, and it just makes it it just makes sense to me. So um and I I agree with uh you know, the rest of the gang about, you know, really any traffic uh coming onto a town road, the town has um the the ability to um review what is occurring that's coming on to the town road. Uh and it's made even more acute in this situation we have here, where we have uh very large vehicles and you also have a very windy, narrow roadway. Um and um you know, the that has to be reviewed. Um so um anyway, I guess, I think let me, I see John and I see Kim um on um it does that give you guys enough guidance to you know, start working on a resolution? Um you 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 see where we're coming from, you see where we we think we're going to end up?
Uh I think I think we have a good idea um of where, you know, where you want to go. I I will say, I I just want to say for the record that uh I just reiterate that Tim Allenbrook recused himself from
Ah, yes.
um this matter at the, you know, before it began and that continues um. But uh beyond that, um you know, I just also wanted to say that the, you know, the issue of the stay uh I understand the board's interest in it, but that's really outside the Z B A's brief on this um. You know, uh after your decision is rendered, then it'll be up to the zoning enforcement officer of the town to decide, you know, what if anything's going to be done further with regard to uh enforcement, so.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else on this topic or?
Uh no, but I do just want to say, um Scott, you had mentioned in the beginning that um and I think it you had mentioned, it sounded like you had said that a resolution had been prepared. Um a resolution hasn't been prepared yet. Um we are um so typically for uh applications for appeals or interpretations, Granton Lyons drafts the um decision based on the direction that we got from the board. Um so the purpose of uh this discussion is to give us direction, and thank you to the board members. Um I I think that we, John and I have a good understanding as to the direction that you want. Uh we will prepare a resolution based on the discussions at tonight's meeting. And um it will be ready by the December fifteenth meeting, which is within sixty-two days of the close of the October meeting.
Yeah, you know, I apologize if I misspoke because you had, and I know I haven't drafted anything uh and um and um uh but yeah, the purpose of this was just really to ha- have the public know uh where, you know, each of the board members stand on this thing. Um and 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 we do this for, you know, obviously every uh uh application, but this one in particular because of the complexity uh. And you know what? I I thought it was really well done by all the parties. Everybody, everybody was uh professional. Um there were cogent arguments made by all parties. It was a very interesting case, I I think. Um uh and and um you know, so anyway, I I did, the the purpose of this was just to give you guys some direction as to where we're going to go, where and I wanted to see what the other board members wanted to do too, you know, because I I knew where I, you know, conceptually where I wanted to go, but it it's not about me, it's about everybody, so. All right. Uh so we'll have a resolution for the next meeting, that'll be great, and um do we have any other business, I think? That's all I have on my agenda. Anybody else have anything else?
No.
No? All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right, all in favor, put up your hands or whatever.
Hi.
Hi. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jim, thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you very much.